Welcome, everyone, to the Village of Tuckahoe zoning board of appeals. Meeting for Wednesday, July 8, 2020. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Why don't we start with Nancy? Why don't you pull the board?
Very good. Sure. Member Garrity.
Present.
Member Fiore.
Present.
Member Palladino.
Present.
Member Jackman.
Present.
And Chairman Scalzo.
Present. Thank you very much. So the first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for June 10, 2020. I assume everyone received them. And do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Nancy, if you could pull the board.
I'll call. Sure. Member Garrity.
In favor?
Member Garrity. Yes, sorry. Member Fiore.
In favor.
Member Palladino.
In favor.
Member Jackman.
In favor.
And Chairman Scalzo.
I abstain. I was not at the meeting.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. So our first applicant is for 216 Dante Avenue. It's a return to discuss the new mudroom. However, I do not see the applicant here, so we will move on to 69 Main Street, which is the Masonic Temple, which is right next to Village Hall. A discussion about some renovations there. And I believe we have the applicant as well as the architect here. And so whoever wants to speak, Andrew, if you'd like to speak first and discuss what is going on, we'd appreciate it. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Andrew Congham, the architect for the project at 69 Main Street, the Masonic Temple building. Currently, the building houses a doctor office. The doctor is also the owner, Peter Zhang. He practices wellness and health medicine, I guess, if you will. The project entails adding an additional story within the existing volume of the building. Currently, the second floor of the building is a double-height assembly space for the Masonic group where they used to meet. There's also a mezzanine level within that double-height assembly space. The premise of the project is to add a floor to create two single-story spaces out of the double-height assembly space. As a result, two doctor offices will be added, one per floor, which means that we need to provide a total of eight parking spaces for the additional. What's for the existing doctor's By adding that additional floor, we are increasing the floor area ratio from an existing non-conforming 2.17 to a proposed 2.75. That is one of the variances that we are seeking. The other is parking, because this existing building occupies a majority of the footprint of the site. There is no room for parking, off-street parking on-site. The owner has decided to purchase 22 Underhill Street, which we filed a separate application for. Currently, there's a two-family house with a detached garage on 22 Underhill Street. We are proposing to demolish that house and garage and create a parking lot dedicated for the required amount of spaces, which is 12, for the new Masonic Temple doctor's office. So clients of Peter and the other two doctors would have to park at 22 Underhill Street, which is not adjacent to 69 Main Street, but two properties over, because it's not a contiguous piece of land. That is the other variance that we're going for, providing off-street parking, but not on the subject or contiguous parcel. And that's pretty much what we're going for. For the 22 Underhill Street parking lot, we are seeking a setback variance for the front side yard as well. So that's kind of the premise of the project.
Great. Thank you very much, Andrew. As I know in our work session, you know, very excited that someone is going to invest in the Masonic Temple there. I think it's sorely in need of renovation, and it's great to see people that want to invest in our village. So we're excited for you guys to bring this proposal to us. One question I have, is there any historic significance to this building in the sense, is it dedicated part of a historic district? Or is there any additional considerations besides the normal building code that we need to be aware of?
I had looked at the state historic preservation office, and it was not listed on their registry. That is the extent that I had determined that this wasn't a historical building. I believe someone else-
And Bill and Gary, do you agree with that?
Yes.
Yeah, I agree with that, too. I had done some research when they were looking to take down the smokestack, and I was on the historical registry quite often to see what was, what had historical significance in Tuckahoe. I did not see that on there.
Great. Great. And Andrew, you kind of described that. So from what I understand, there's a basement, which is used for mechanical and storage. There's a first floor, which is Dr. Zhang's office. And then the second floor is kind of this atrium ceiling, this high floor. Is that occupied right now? What there currently?
It is not occupied. It's vacant. The Masonic group, like I said in the work session, their belongings are still there. There's still memorabilia. It's kind of a strange space, especially if you're by yourself in there. It's quite dark with the curtains drawn. Yeah, it's totally vacant. It still smells like smoke in there, like the group had just stepped out, and it would be right. It's very interesting, but it's useless right now. It doesn't have much use as a double-height space, in my opinion. And I think that if Dr. Peter can bring in some of his cohorts to help occupy this building, invest some dollars into not only 69, but 22, would be a great thing to bring people into Tuckahoe. Those people, as a result, will stick around and eat in Tuckahoe, shop in Tuckahoe, take the drain to and from Tuckahoe. I think it's beneficial to everybody.
Great. And is, so question, has Dr. Peter, Dr. Zhang owned this building for a long time, or is this fairly new that he purchased it?
I believe he's owned it for a few years. Is that right, Dolph?
Four years.
Four years. Gotcha.
And he recently purchased 22 Underhill earlier this year.
Gotcha. And the Masonic people don't exist anymore? That organization's disbanded? As far as you know?
They're around. They're the ones who bought the College in Oroschelle, the basins. They just left Tuckahoe.
Wow, just like that?
Dolph, it looks like Dolph wanted to speak. Dolph.
Yeah. As of six months ago, they were holding occasional meetings. I don't know the current status, but clearly it is not being utilized anywhere near capacity.
So do they have a lease to use it? And that's being ended, I assume?
I think it's month-to-month. Effectively, it's just an arrangement. I don't know. I know that they did have a lease when Peter bought the building. And I don't know that he has kept up with the paperwork. You know, they pay, they, trust me, they don't pay anything, very, very little. My understanding is that they pay their monthly rent, and that's it. That's the end of it. I can find out whether there is a lease or not.
I assume you'll take care of it in the proper legal form, so I'm not that worried about it. I appreciate it. So I guess the question is, so Andrew, so what is the vision for the property itself? So on the first floor, Dr. Zhang has his offices. And so you want to take the second floor and kind of cut it in half and make a second and third floor? And what's the proposed use for that second and third floor?
So the second and third floor, correct. We would chop up the double-second floor and create two floors out of it. And those would also be doctor's offices. And those would call for four parking spots per doctor. So that's how we arrived at 12 spots for the lot.
So each floor would be a single doctor's office, is sort of your vision?
Correct. Yep. That's the idea. Currently, Peter has his office on the first floor, and he has a lot of rooms. The rooms should have been labeled examination room, or MRI machine room, or CAT scan room. There's a lot of equipment that's associated with his work. So there are a few rooms that have dedicated equipment and are only occupied when a patient requires that equipment is present. There are also rooms that are just for storage, rooms that he hasn't fully packed yet, but it's just him in there right now. So he is trying to bring in a similar doctor with his skill set that would be able to use a lot of space for one doctor.
Great. I've got a couple more questions, but does anyone have questions for the applicant on sort of the use of the space before we get into parking and traffic?
I've got one.
Yeah.
Can the, I brought this up before, can the second floor hold another floor? Can the building hold up another floor?
So the way that we were envisioning the third-floor structure to be built, we would build it independent of the existing first and second-floor structure, so that we weren't imposing any additional loads on that existing structural frame. So we would utilize the foundation, the exterior walls of the building, or solid masonry. They vary from about two feet at the basement level to about 16 inches at the top of the building. So that's something that we are fully prepared to analyze, and we would use a structural engineer to sign off and properly design the structure.
Okay.
This is Noah Levine. I'm the planner for the village. Just two questions on the use. What's the total square footage of office space that you propose to have and add compared to the space that's there now? And then my second question is, will the third floor be handicap accessible?
Okay, good questions. The first floor is currently 3,541 square feet. The second floor is right around that same number. The third floor existing, if you call it a third floor, it's really a mezzanine level, is about maybe 400 square feet or so. So each floor would be roughly 3,500 square feet of doctor's offices. Your second question, sorry, what was it again?
Handicap accessible.
Elevator for the third floor.
Yeah, part of the design is to create a handicap-accessible building. So we would install an elevator that would stop at all three floors plus the basement. And then per the building code, we would need to provide a second means of egress, which we would install a stair tower in the back of the building for that second means. That would not be accessible, because that's a secondary means. But yes, anybody street would go up the ramp to the door and be in the elevator lobby and be able to get to anywhere.
If I could. I know, so Nathan Jackman. I know we had discussed in the work session that, you know, part of the drive behind coming in this month was just kind of getting these plans in front of the zoning and planning board and getting our input and kind of just getting the ball rolling here. I think, just for your reference, when you do start coming back in with kind of more detailed plans, I would very much like to know what numbers Dr. Zhang is in. Obviously, he's the expert. He knows how many patients he's going to be seeing on an hourly basis, just to give us some sort of estimate of the usage of the building. Because it sounds, you know, we mentioned in the work session, how many offices there are in Dr. Zhang's floor, which thank you for the clarification, that, you know, many of those are multiple machines that, you know, aren't in use all day. So, you know, the real number of patients is probably much lower than the number of rooms up on the floor. I would be very interested in the number of patients each of those floors would, you know, in an estimated fashion, be seeing.
Yeah, that was something that the planning board also was interested in. And one of my notes was to consult with Dr. Zhang and investigate the vacancy rate of his space. How many patients is he seeing in a day? How many are in the waiting room at one time? And also the types of treatments and procedures that he does. Just want to present that information to everybody, so we all know the full spectrum here.
Okay. Thank you. If there's any way for us to see photos of the current interior space, so we can see what you're talking about regarding this space, barring that, we could possibly have a visit, but obviously, the current environment, that might be difficult. So photos would be fine for me, just to see what we're looking at would be helpful.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Thank you. That's it for me, David.
Thank you.
Last question for you. So how many square feet will each doctor be occupying per your new design?
Well, the floor is about 3,500 square feet. Out of that, maybe 400 to 500 is taken up by stair tower and also elevator lobby. So it would be roughly 3,000 per doctor's office, including the exam rooms, the corridors, the bathrooms, the waiting room, and any ancillary uses the doctor would have.
So we're looking at about 3,000 square feet per doctor, so 12,000 square feet of retail?
9,000.
Okay. I thought you said four doctors.
Three doctors.
Okay.
Yeah. Three floors, three doctors, four parking spaces per doctor.
So just on the zoning board, off my recollection, the use that the building has right now, off my memory of doing an inspection many years ago, is the doctors controlling, just so everybody can get their picture there, I guess, the front portion of the room of the building on the first floor, the basement area, which is, could be potentially fully occupied as far as the building department's concerned, which it is right now, because there's a meeting room area down there, there is a kitchen area that the masons used to use, or they still use as far as we're concerned. And then there's the back portion to the proposed area that they use, as well as the mezzanine. So as far as I think the building department's concerned, and I think Bill could chime if he wants, there is still two tenants there. Whether they occupy it, or if there's a lease or not, somebody potentially could come in there and occupy that other use as, he doesn't need to make a proposal for that, as long as the use was similar to what is there now. Just want to give everybody that kind of a picture as to what is there, what's being proposed, and the intensity of the increased proposal, if you feel fit, that there would be an increase in that potential.
That's right. And also, there's zero off-street parking spaces associated with this property now.
Correct. Correct. There is zero. So any proposal that came in that was similar to this Mason group that's existing as far as we're concerned right now, it really would just be a new business, kind of a CEO, walking in and out, and there wouldn't be too much of a proposal.
Yep, that's right.
Great. Why don't we, I appreciate everyone's comments. Why don't we move on and discuss the parking and potential traffic issues, if anyone's got questions? So Andrew, why don't you start and describe sort of what you're planning for parking and egress, you know, the village lot?
Yeah. So like I mentioned, currently, there are no parking spaces for this building. And if we were to go ahead with this project, per the zoning code, we would need to provide 12 spaces. So the solution that we came up with was to-
Sorry to interrupt you. Just one second. Do you have, is there no parking currently leased by Dr. Zhang and his employees? Do you have no parking spots at all leased or-
I don't know, Dolph. Do you know?
I think he rents spaces.
Was that not part of his original approval? Gary?
I don't want to tell you what he does, because I don't have the, you know, I'm not sure.
I think the people would have made him rent spaces. I don't, I can't remember a building that didn't require that.
Yeah, Nate, off the top of my head, going back, being here so long, I believe that when he went for his site plan approval, he had to have a certain amount of spaces. It could be like 74. I'm not sure. I think we'd have to look at it, but I-
I would just like all the zoning board members to have that info about what he currently has under his previous approvals before we go adding more spots. All right, sorry, proceed. Thank you.
Okay. So one of the solutions for the parking dilemma was to purchase 22 Underhill Street, which Peter did earlier this year. It's, like I said, the two-family house with a garage. That would all get wiped out, and we're proposing to build a parking lot with 12 spaces to satisfy the zoning requirements of 69 Main Street. One of the issues with doing that is that now clients have to walk from that parking space down the sidewalk of Cameron, around the corner of Main Street, and into the front of the building. This is what we're working with currently, and other members and everybody else here. The other idea or other route that we are very interested to take is to do a land swap with the village. So currently, the Cameron Place Municipal Lot is in between 69 Main and 22 Underhill. The Cameron Place Lot has about 13 or 14 spaces. We would propose to swap, demolish the house, build a brand-new parking lot, give that to the village. We would take the Cameron Place Municipal Lot, and that would give us direct access to the building, to the rear of the building. The rear of the building could now become the front entry of the building, and that would also help alleviate people from parking in the front of the building on Main Street, or dropping off people at the front and entering the building from Main Street. Now, the drop-off in the parking location is all access from the rear. I think everybody zoning and planning was in favor of doing something like this, but we need to go through the proper steps. We need to talk, or I need to contact David Burke again, and figure out what's the best method to start this conversation. But again, we wanted to get on the agendas. We wanted to get in front of everybody and just say, we're here, and this is what we want to do. How do we proceed? How do we satisfy everybody's needs, us, the village, the community, and people that visit Tuckahoe as patients? So that's about it.
Any questions, comments on that?
I have mainly a clarification from the building department regarding parking. The only thing we're supposed to vote on is the, what do you call, sideyard variance on the proposed parking lot, and that it's not actually exactly part of the building, next to the building and everything. Now, their proposed 12 spaces, was that, how should I say, sufficient number of spaces that they didn't need a parking variance for what they were looking for when they renovated the building? Mike, go. Hello?
Yeah. Andrew? My understanding, they're also asking for FAR variance, too, right?
That's on the building. We're talking about the parking.
Just the parking.
Right. Right. But their proposal is together. They're hands-in-hand, right?
Well, there's actually two separate, what do you call, there's two separate submissions.
Right. Because there's, John, because there's two locations, there's two applications. One would be for a special permit to operate the parking at 22 Underhill, and then there's the FAR variance for 69 Main Street.
Bill, let me ask you a more specific question. If the lot was connected, is 12 the right number of parking spots?
Yes. They're only required four per doctor.
That's what I'm asking.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And no, what do you call, parking variance?
Correct.
Yeah, no parking quantity variance. We could have potentially came in here and said, we want to do this Masonic Temple project, add another doctor's office. The required parking is 16. We're proposing zero, and then start the conversation there. We knew that was going to be an issue, so we had Peter and Dolph go out of the way and buy, I don't know how much the building on 22 Underhill costs, but, you know, they made a significant investment in an effort to advance this project.
So Bill Williamson, Mike, question on the definition of a doctor. The architect continues to say that there will be three doctors, but there can be many doctors in a doctor's office. I mean, how do you guys view a doctor? Or, you know, what do you mean by that? Or what is-
If there's a doctor working- Dave, if there's a doctor working at that location, that doctor would require four parking spaces.
So what if there's two doctors working half-time each?
They each require four spaces.
Because often doctors share offices. Dentists share offices. There's three dentists working in a single location under one brand name, or one, you know, whatever. How do we view that as a zoning board, as a village code? How do you think about that?
We haven't had that problem yet, Dave, but I know that, like you say, doctors do share, as long as they don't exceed the number of doctors during the time that they're open. Let's say that there's three at this location, and it never exceeds three at any time during the day or the week, then they would be in compliance.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Also, David, Peter Zhang has another office in Poughkeepsie, so he splits his time between Tuckahoe and Poughkeepsie. So his office is vacant, essentially, I don't know if it's two or three days out.
It's vacant two days. It's Monday, Wednesday, and Friday in Tuckahoe.
I would like to add a question on the subject of parking. Now that we spoke about the requirements for parking status for a doctor, and maybe this question is towards what Noah is helping us in the village. When we say that we're going to demolish a property to add the parking to meet the requirement, and then if we look at the area of view of Tuckahoe, especially the downtown area close to Main Street, in our comprehensive plan-
No, I can't hear now.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
I hear you.
All right. So when we look at our comprehensive plan or master plan, I'm counting at least 10 parking areas in a very small square area. So we have Lake Avenue, we have Oak Avenue, Oak Street, and we then have a few on Main Street.
Parking lot.
Parking lots. Are we considering that when we take that into account, Noah?
You mean surrounding parking?
Yes. It looks a lot to me, and I'm wondering-
There's a lot of parking, she's saying, for people, that there's no-
You know, from my understanding, parking has always been an issue, just for all of the applications in the past. And there's no, there's definitely not a surplus in parking. And so we've been, I think the village's policy, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, and Gary, and David, has been to make sure that there's sufficient parking for, you know, for all applications. I don't know. Is that what you're getting at, Carolina? I'm sorry.
I think, Noah, I think you missed the planning board last, the work session last night. I know Carolina spoke about this with the planning board, is that Cameron basically becomes a parking lot after parking lot.
Right.
In kind of a residential zone. I think that was the concern.
They're not going to allow-
Now it's just all parking.
Oh, right. Okay, I see. Sorry. Yeah, no, we should definitely take a look at that. There is, you know, there definitely is a concern with-
They're not going to allow-
Having to see parking that there.
They're not going to want it.
Sorry, we're getting some feedback.
So if you do-
Could we ask the individual who's on here that says iPhone, could they mute their- Could we ask the individual who's on here that says iPhone, could they mute their line, please?
Okay, so basically, if you right now, and anybody in this meeting would like to do a quick exercise and go to a Google aerial view and just analyze the impact of this variety of parking areas in our downtown, the village downtown area, it's quite intense, the visual of all of these parking lots. And I know it's a requirement and we're doing our best, but it might be something that we have to acknowledge before moving forward in this decision.
Hey Caroline, the only thing that I can say is that that is, that's great comment there, but I think that that would be more of something on the lines of denying or approving the special use permit. Gary could look at that a little bit more, because they are requiring to get a special use permit and that could be one of the determinations that they say yes or no on.
Right. Yeah, that's why I was directing the question mostly to Noah and see if there was anything in our comprehensive plans or master plan that limit the amount of parking lots or similar rules and regulations. But that was it, thank you.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it, thanks Carolina.
Are there any other comments on the parking?
Yeah, I got, I got one. Say this project goes through and everything, say he has four spaces now, does he have to give those four rented spaces up to go into this lot? Or does he have to keep what he has already?
No, I believe if he has the, if, if, if it was part of his prior site plan approval for that, the doctor before, he would, he would have a good argument and I think the Building Department, Bill could chime in a little bit more, would agree that it's still, now he only is going to be three doctors and he would require the 12 spaces, so he meets his requirement, he wouldn't need the additional. But you could make out a condition of it, but he would meet that.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, I would agree with Mike on that, because now he meets it, we don't care where he has the spaces, he has them.
So that could basically open up some more spaces for somebody else, just in case.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, I appreciate it. I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing on, on what is it, 69 Main Street as well as 22 Underhill. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to discuss 69 Main Street or 22 Underhill at this point? Alright, seeing none, I think we will hold that open for next month as well. I'll just make a couple closing comments. You know, I really appreciate you guys coming before us. I think the Masonic building itself is very instrumental to the revival or continued revival of downtown Tuckahoe. We have a beautiful village hall, beautiful building, and to the extent that the Masonic building can be something distinctive and beautiful, I think it would be great for the entire village of Tuckahoe. And so, you know, I definitely would like you guys to continue on this track and do something great. I'm a little worried that we may be trying to jam too many small offices rather than taking what could be a very special place, space and making it special. And I think, I think most of us would agree that a land swap with the, with the village is something very worthwhile to discuss because it could allow for egress from the back off Main Street and obviously make it continuous property. It's definitely worth discussing.
Hey Dave, just to let you know, 216 Dante Avenue is on.
Wonderful.
I am very sorry, the, the meeting invite wasn't posted until 7:35, so that's why we're late. We were looking out for it.
No problem. Alright, we'll get to 216 in one second. Is there any last comments that people, that the zoning board members would like to make on 69 Main Street and 22 Underhill before we move on?
I would say since, I would say since we have until September for our next meeting, I would like to see, you know, it doesn't have to be concrete plans, but I would like to see a little more info about how they're setting up the, at least the second floor. The third floor, we can talk about later, but the second floor, I'd like to see that layout a little more clearly laid out and also pictures of the current space as is.
Okay, and we'll get you some metrics on the, the scheduling and the quantity of patients.
Thank you, that's very helpful, we appreciate it.
I got, I got one before you go. Was any of the neighbors on Underhill Street notified about it?
Yes, we did the, the letter.
Yes, they were all notified, you know, for the regulations, 216-
Did they file the mailings?
Mail, all that stuff.
Bill, did they file the mailings with you yet?
Did they, you what?
Me either, Bill.
I would have to check the receipts with Mary Ann, but I believe they were dropped off.
Okay.
Okay.
Andrew, yeah?
Yep, that's right.
I know there's a fire, there's a firehouse there too.
It was mailed.
Okay.
Dolph did that part. Alright, Andrew, Andrew and Dolph, thank you guys very much for coming and presenting before us.
Thanks a lot.
On 69 Main Street and 22 Underhill, you're, you're free to go at the moment. Thank you very much and we look forward to seeing you at the next meeting.
Have a nice Labor Day.
Have a good night, yep, see you soon.
Yes, exactly, have a nice Labor Day.
Hopefully you'll be in Village Hall then.
Alright, with that, we are here to do, to continue our discussion on 216 Dante. And the applicants are here.
Hi, guys. Sorry for the confusion, thank you.
Ah, yes, Sally.
That's easier than ever.
We love these electronic formats.
There's always plenty of hiccups.
So it looks like you made some, some small changes, some changes to your, to the design application. So why don't you, why don't you tell us what's going on?
Right, so we looked at-
Let the architect say or?
Do you think I mind, I can go over a few points for you?
Yeah, our architect is on the call, Ms. Fox.
Can everyone hear me? Is that alright?
I hear you.
Yes, we can, thank you.
Thank you.
So we, we submitted some revised drawings, which reduced the proposed addition down to what we feel is probably the minimal functional area for mudroom. It's about six foot six wide and we kept the depth the same at nine foot seven inches deep. And this in turn reduces the side yard variance to 2.7 feet. In turn, this also reduces the new impervious area for the entire site down to only 22 square feet for all the improved, the proposed improvements, which includes the addition, the new walk-in the steps. And as well, the overall square footage of the addition is then reduced down to 62 square feet. We took some of the comments from the board from last month into consideration. I did a study about preparing, you know, an addition on the south side of the property. And a few things came about. One was the overall size of an addition on that side being that we would have to provide a new stair from the, from the basement level up as well as in addition to a mudroom of comparable size. An addition of that size would be about 300 square feet, which amounts to five times more than the size of what we're proposing now. Additionally speaking, the mud, the size of the addition would likely also require probably a front yard variance because the existing building is non-conforming and the front yard is only 31.8 feet from the front yard and a required front yard would be 35 feet. So then, instead of a side yard variance, then that type of proposed addition would require in turn a front yard variance. Further investigation into an alternative would lend us to obviously more than 300 square feet of impervious area and site disruption, which would be more than 10 times as great as what we're being proposed right now. I don't know if, we'd like to take this opportunity, I don't know, I know we missed the work session, I apologize. I'm not really sure what happened with the link, but we were waiting and we didn't find it. So do I have the opportunity to sort of go through stuff that was presented last month that we didn't have the opportunity to respond to because we didn't have the information available or?
Yeah, this is, this is your, your turn, so please respond to anything you feel necessary.
Okay, well, as, as you know, both, I'm sorry, I can't say the neighbors at the, I can't pronounce the neighbors at 218 Dante's every last name, but he and his attorney, Mr. Scalisi, presented two letters of objection and we'd like to respond to them. We would like to preface the discussion about that in that my client had been discussing this addition with 218 Dante Avenue for at least a prior, for at least a year prior to moving forward with this project. And during that time, he did not raise any objection to the addition. But that being said, we understand that it's his right to change his mind. However, he was not, you know, initially opposed to the project. With all that being said, it should be noted that these proposed plans, the addition is in relatively the same proximity to the property as his current house is. There's only a difference of about four inches. His property, his whole house sits 6.9 feet from the property, or 6.7 feet from the property line. And the proposed, these new changes will sit 6.4. So, oh, his, his property is 6.7 and the, the new is, the new proposal's only 6.3.
If I may clarify, this is on a house existing prior to the current zoning code. And the-
That is correct, yes.
The neighbor is not built any structure closer to the property, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
And, and that due to the slope of the property and the existing configuration of my client's home, there's not going to be any, the addition is not going to be visible from Dante Avenue itself. There's adequate screening and like I said, just due to the grade itself, it'll be not visible from Dante Avenue. He had raised some concerns about the current pandemic and things like that. And, you know, we want everybody to be rest assured that, you know, all precautions, you know, would be, would be adhered to and, you know, taken. Construction was, you know, the first thing that was reopened, you know, in the phases. And that, you know, that, that all precautions, like I said, will be taken. Mr., there's no proof that the project would devalue his home and I would like to beg to differ that this addition would improve the value of my client's home. And that in turn would probably raise the value of his home as well. And like with any other construction project, all necessary safeguards would be put in place to ensure the safety of all parties involved. That's a standard of construction. And that the, you know, the addition should have no impact on the neighboring property whatsoever. And that my client has actually even offered to get an engineering report of the area just to put the neighbor at 218 Dante Avenue at ease. The other thing that I wanted to note is that in Mr. Scalisi's letter, I think that he must have been using either outdated information or incorrected information in that most of the calculations that he provided were incorrect. I'm not sure if he was looking at old drawings, but he certainly wasn't using the information that was used filed for the, for the variance as all of the numbers that he stated were not in tune with what was filed for the variance. I think that we, I, you know, previously addressed, you know, exploring the option of adding, you know, the addition on the south side. Like I said, in addition to it being, you know, enormously larger than what we're proposing, it would also have perhaps needed a front yard variance. It would be economically infusible for my client and it would also have a huge impact, much more of an impact on the environment than what we're proposing.
So, sorry, we'll get into your new applicant, your revisions later, which I think were great, thank you. I think, you know, you heard what we were talking about. Just, I was actually stalling over your plans over the break. And I did wonder, you know, where that existing patio is behind the living room. And this is not, you know, we'll address the plans you proposed, I'm not trying to redirect you to this, it's just a, it's just a question. If you put it on where that existing patio is behind the living room, you get your really big mudroom. You wouldn't have to, you know, put down, you know, two stories, it's on the same level as the proposed mudroom, correct? You would just have to do a slab-on-grade. You'd get your very large mudroom, it would just involve obviously walking a little further around that side. But that was just, again, poring over your plans over the last month.
Right, we would also-
That is neither here nor there.
Our only current level outdoor space, every other outdoor space that we have is on the slope and that's the only spot, yep, that's flat outside.
I mean, they have a big yard. No, I understand, it's just, you had talked last month about, you know, how you wanted this room for your kids and having this big space and now, you know, your space, while it's an improvement and it's in the direction we talked about, it's just so small now. You know, it's just a thought from my part that, you know, this is the way we could have a very large room back there.
Nathan, I mean, the issue is that we have a pretty big yard in the back, if you see, but it's completely sloped, so it's completely useless for us, all we can do is plant trees. I mean, kids can't use that space at all, so this is our only patio that kids can actually use. Having two kids under the age of four, it's, it's nice to have a small patio area at least.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out how to get you a bigger room back, because it's, I understand. Sorry, off track there, David.
No problem. Are there any other questions by zoning board members at this point, before we open it up to public comment?
I just had one other thing that I wanted to note, was that in the, in last month, there was one letter of objection that was submitted. That has since been rescinded by the neighbor who wishes to remain neutral. And we additionally submitted six additional letters from the neighborhood that have no objection to the proposed addition.
Thank you, those letters were received, so I appreciate it. We, we did receive those and those were distributed to the zoning board members. Are there any other comments or questions from the zoning board members at this point? Nathan, yes?
Yeah, I just, it, it, sorry, if you could just run through, kind of like for a kindergarten or just break down, for example, I'm away from my house previously, but from what I can see, you've moved the room we're talking about and at least a foot closer to the house and you've also kind of swung the entry door from facing the neighbor around to the front of the new structure, is that correct?
The door has not changed, the door was always facing that direction. It's just that we shrunk it down, we figured that a six-foot interior dimension would really be the minimum dimension that we could get. We figured that way we could maybe load each wall with cabinetry or a hall tree or shelving or whatever so that, or hooks, you know, for
Right.
jackets and things like that and still have it double, like a double-loaded wall. Basically like a big walk-in closet is really-
Okay, and so just for clarity, your previous ask for the, for the variance was what versus this one?
Previously, we were asking for, sorry.
Thank you for helping me out, that I don't have to-
Not at all. Previously-
You just needed three point-
We were asking for a three foot, but 3.9 foot variance and we have reduced it down to a 2.7 foot variance.
So you've come in a foot closer to the house, okay. Or roughly.
Ms. Fox, could you say that the other way? How much from the, the yard line to the wall is, was it before?
Previously, with the, the addition was 5.1 feet from the side yard. Now we are proposing that it will be 6.3 feet from the side yard.
Thank you very much.
And if I could just clarify, I think we've mentioned this in previous meetings, we always appreciate, and David, you can obviously correct me here, but we always appreciate feedback from the public. However, the feedback is not taken in the sense of whether an application is public resistance to an application, we're not actually allowed, or support, we're not actually allowed to contemplate that as part of our decision, but what it does is it helps us see point- but what it does is it helps us see points that the public might raise, or understand the perspective that they're coming from. Is that correct, David?
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly a consideration, since, you know, one of the, the prongs is the characteristic of the neighborhood, and so to the extent the neighbors have an opinion on what those characteristics are, it's something to consider, but it's not, it's never definitive, that's for sure. Are there other, other comments from the zoning board members or questions?
I got nothing. Everything was answered.
Seeing that there's no more questions from the zoning board members, I'd like to reopen the, the public hearing and ask if there's anyone from the public who would like to speak on behalf of this, this application, either for or against or, or neutral.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Jim Scalisi, I represent the neighbors at 218 Dante. We've had previously submitted our objections. I just want to go over a couple of points. First of all, my clients have always tried to be good neighbors with respect to this. There was a discussion at the outset about the applicants doing a project here, and as Ms. Fox indicated, my client did not voice any objections because they did not have any specifics. Once the specifics came in and my client saw the substantial nature of the variance, that became a different story. Having said that, they want to try to be good neighbors, obviously, and, and certainly the fact that the applicant and their architect have taken into account the concerns of the, my clients, as well as some of the concerns that were raised by the board members in revising this plan, these plans are certainly a good step. We still believe that it doesn't meet the test for the area variance, but one thing that if I recall was talked about in the work session, that you will not be voting on this tonight, and the, this will be held over till September, which I believe may be helpful in that, I haven't spoken to my clients in detail about this, but maybe there is some way that we can come to some type of an understanding or an agreement that in light of the revised changes to the plan, maybe some type of, maybe some type of trees that could be planted, or some type of screening, it might be beneficial for this plan to be able to move forward. As I said, I haven't spoken to my clients in detail about that, but in trying to be good neighbors, I'm sure that's something that they would consider. As it is right now, though, we still do believe that this plan, this project does not meet the area variance test. I know there were some letters in support, as well as a letter to an opposition, and, and the chairman did accurately state that that is something that is considered in determining whether or not it's going to have an adverse effect on the neighborhood. I would like to, though, just correct one or two things in, in those letters. They tend to say that the structure will not be visible from the street, and at the current time, that is correct because there is screening there right now, which is the result of, of trees and bushes that are deciduous. So they will lose their leaves late fall, and they will be off the trees and bushes likely through early spring. So I, I just need to be accurate with respect to the fact that it will not be seen from the street. These houses at this location, they are very close together, and contrary to, I think, what some of the letters said, I have not, and I have walked the streets, seen houses that have additions like this that are that close. But being as it may, I, we recognize the fact that there are people that have submitted letters in support of the applicant, which is the right, but I would, I would just like to caution and, and remind the board that of all of those people that have submitted letters, nobody will be affected quite like my client will be if this project goes through. So I, I don't have a whole lot more to say. I appreciate the effort that's being put in here by everybody, including this board, to, to take its responsibility, responsibility very seriously. And I would hope between now and the next meeting in September, that there might be a way that this can somehow move forward and make everybody happy.
Thank you, Mr. Scalisi. I appreciate it. Question for you, could you expand on the idea of, you know, the idea of putting up a fence, or putting up some, some plants or screening, or, you know, visual aspects to the, to the addition that might be, make it more palatable to, to your client? Have, have you discussed those? You said you only had preliminary conversations, but are there, you know, paint color, you know, anything like that?
Well, I, I, I'm not sure if they're aubervites or something along those lines, but the more I was looking at this project, and as I said, they have attempted to scale it back, and my clients trying to be good neighbors here, we're trying to think of a way that this could go through. So that may be, I'm not sure a fence is going to do it. I, I think that may detract from the properties and may actually make it look even closer for some reason, but it is something that I would like to discuss with my clients and hopefully with Ms. Fox, if she would be open to something along those lines.
If I may add, David, we have aubervites all along our back, would be happy to add something along the side anyway for the privacy of both us and them.
Yeah, we're very willing to work.
We had mentioned that in our first work session itself, that would be happy to, you know, we'll be improving the landscaping in that area anyway, so.
Ms. Fox, you look like you, you had something to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that, that in our original, one of, part of the original submission in the test for area of answer, area of answer, area variances, that we, you know, wrote down that in addition to improving the walkways, we would also be improving the landscaping. So if you'd like to coordinate on what that landscaping would be, we would be more than happy to do that. Just one other point that I wanted to mention was that there actually have been other area variances like this on that block that have been granted. Again, I understand that every variance that's granted is individual. I understand that, but there were actually two area, two side yard variances granted for a property at 201 Dante Avenue back in 2006 and 2007. It was for an addition to the kitchen, and it was a similar, similar in size, that they requested a side yard variance, and they provided six-foot, 11-inch side yard, and needed whatever it is, 3.1 or 2.1 side yard variance. Then they went back to the board several months later and asked for a second variance, so that they could actually, instead of building a one-story addition, could build a two-story addition, and they asked for a second variance for the second story, and that was granted as well. So we were, you know, we're only asking for the one story, and like I said, I understand it's individual to each property, but, you know, Mr. Scalisi said that he wasn't aware of any variances granted in the area. I just wanted him to make, be aware of those.
Do you recall what month those decisions were?
That's right, I didn't hear you.
Do you remember, or do you recall what months those decisions were, those variances were granted in? I'm going to look those up.
It's, yeah, I printed it, hang on. I, I can't, I couldn't go back online, so the far enough, one was, I think, that the second floor variance was granted on March 14th, 2007, for 201 Dante Avenue, but it references the previous variance of the same, the same variance. You know, they got, like I said, they got basically two variances of the same.
Well, while I appreciate your, while I appreciate the examples, I mean, none of these, none of these are in front of us for us to see the exact situations these are referring to, and as you noted yourself, each property in this sense is very different. This was also, that would have been a completely different board quite a few years ago. So, you know, so that's neither here nor there, and I think, I think the positive, the positive takeaway here, as Mr. Scalisi and Mr. Scalisi were discussing, is, you know, that we have some, your clients have obviously been very kind by kind of scaling back their project in respect for their neighbors' concerns. Mr. Scalisi is obviously also kind of putting out an olive branch regarding how his client could see this working, and I mean, that seems like a very positive approach for, for both parties to kind of proceed down, and I hope, you know, we can kind of focus on that aspect of this rather than.
I, I completely agree, Nathan, yeah. Yeah, I mean, we, at this point, you know, we, we have, we have young kids under the age of four, they have kid at age of five, I mean, and if we want to raise our family here, we would like to have.
Yeah. I mean, let's maybe just keep it on a positive tone. It sounds like things are kind of moving in a general direction.
Absolutely.
I do want you guys to understand, David, I'm not sure if you did mention it, since you put in new applications, we actually now have to push this over to the next meeting, and the problem is that we don't have a meeting in August, so this actually runs into September now. Okay, I just want to make sure you guys knew that. It's not, you know, we're kind of required to keep this open.
Learning it for the long haul.
Okay.
Mudrooms are for the winter anyways, you know.
I'd be interested in two months when you guys come back, if, you know, if you've had some conversations, if there's been any further positive steps.
I hope so, yeah.
Are there, are there any other comments from the public? Anyone else from the public that would like to address this application? Okay, so with that, I think I will hold over the public comments till, till next, till our next meeting. As everyone has said, we're not in a position to vote on this application today because the plan has changed, has been slightly scaled back. I, and as, as member Jackman said, you know, I, I think there's a possibility of this working out, and it would be great for the homeowners to come together if possible. So with that, I would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting of whatever today is.
July 8?
July 8th of July 8th. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Village of Tuckahoe. We appreciate it. The Zoning Board of Appeals meeting is adjourned.
Hopefully you're ready to go to September.
Yeah, everyone, do well.